Thank you.
It's super easy. It just does it itself.
That's official.
Probably the easiest piece of tech I've ever used.
That's awesome.
Okay, and we have some people logged in, right? Joining us?
We have attendees so far.
Okay, perfect. We're gonna get started in just a minute here. We just got our, we're using some new technology tonight that we're seeing how we can continue to improve access for folks. So we're get start, get started in just a minute here. We'll let, see if there's anyone else joining the meeting and then we'll call the meeting to order in about one minute or so. I'm very distracted by how nice it looks. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And it is 6:34. We are holding the meeting live in person tonight, and we do have the full board here in person. And we are meeting in person. We do have some folks in the audience here as well. We do know we have folks joining us via Zoom. So thank you, folks, for joining us. We appreciate it. And just so everyone knows, because we are meeting in person and we do have a quorum of the board here in person, that is the priority for the work of the board to continue at the time of the posted meeting. And we are, will try everything within our best power to make sure that access stays available for folks to join us via Zoom. If for some reason that is not made available, the meetings are being recorded and we are taking notes and we have minutes of the, of all of our meetings available for folks. So if for some reason we did lose connectivity, knock on wood, we won't somewhere. But just so folks know, the board will continue the meeting forward. So we thank everyone for your patience as we figure out how to have our meetings in person but also available digitally. So so far, it looks like our new owl friend, who I can't show you because she's doing the work of showing you the meeting, is gonna help us make that a little easier. So before we get her, oh, her name is Hawkeye. So, thank you. Okay, so before we get started, I just wanna take a few minutes at the start of the meeting and use my prerogative as chair just to make a quick statement. I just wanna take a moment on behalf of the school board to recognize the Grantham Village School for winning the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award for exemplary high performing schools. The board has not met since the announcement was made, and so I wanna just take a minute to recognize this incredible accomplishment. And we look forward to celebrating with all of you, with the whole community. While our thanks go out to the entire GBS community, students, staff, families, as well as the Grantham community at large, I would like to just take a minute to call out a couple of folks who are here tonight specifically for recognition. So to Superintendent Sydney Leggett, to Principal Kristen Reed, and to SAU Administrative Assistant Brenda Malloy. This award would literally not have been possible without your leadership dedication and hard work this last year. So thank you. You shepherded us through not only an academic year, a pandemic, but also an exhaustive year-long application process to see this recognition through to fruition. So I know the work that it took behind the scenes for you to show the Department of Education, what all of us already knew, which is that Grantham Village School is exemplary. So the Grantham School Board is honored to serve this community, and while we would be proud of GBS with or without this award, the national recognition shows what we already knew, that our hawks soar high. So thank you and congratulations. Okay, so our first item is to approve the agenda. So do we have any changes, additions, anything to adjust on the agenda tonight? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the agenda. So we have a motion from Leslie. We need a second. I have a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so the agenda is approved. Our first item on our agenda is public participation. So just a reminder for public participation, we have folks here in the room who are welcome to participate. We also have folks online who you are also welcome to provide public input. We ask that you state your name and your address, just as we would if you were here in the room, for both anyone in the room or online. We will leave public participation open. On our agenda, we have for 10 minutes. If it's less than that, we'll take less than that. If it seems like we have more input, we will give a reasonable extension to that timeframe. And for folks who are joining us virtually, you are welcome to write in Q and A or chat. Those features are available during public participation. For folks here in the room, please feel free to state your name and your address and speak if you'd like to. So we'll open it up for public participation now. So my company has started having the like hold music playing during, like at the beginning when people are like joining the meeting and stuff and I can't decide if I like it or not. So. Oh, my gosh. Cause it's always like you're like partway into a song and they like turn it off. It's like, oh, I like that song. Did anyone in the room want to public, publicly, publicly participate now? Okay. I think I know why each of you are here, so. Just give some time if anyone joining us online wanted to share anything. Give it just a couple, couple more seconds, just in case anyone's typing. See anything come in, did you? Okay. Okay, so we will close public participation. We'll move on to our agenda and our first agenda item is our student school board liaisons. And I think we have Seth with us. Is that what I see? And do we have?
And Ellen.
An Ellen, perfect.
All right, I will.
Excellent. So we're gonna bring our student school board liaisons in, and they are not here in the room with us. They are joining us.
And I'm actually not sure, I wasn't sure how this would look moving somebody in as a panelist, but it works pretty seamlessly. Yeah, we will bring Ellen in. Hi Seth and Ellen, we have missed you.
Yeah, it's been a little while since the board has heard from you. So just to open it up, we'd love to just hear from you how the start of the school year has gone for both of you. And if there's anything particular that for the start of this year that you think would be important for the board to hear about. You know, we'd love to hear just about your experience as students starting the year, but also if you think there's anything that we should know as a board, we'd love to hear that as well. So Seth, you're top on, on the screen that I'm looking at. So I'm gonna call on you first.
Okay, um, yeah, the school year has been great. It's been a lot better than last year, I think, coming to our new COVID world, I think. Everyone has kind of adjusted now and it just is way better since it's not hybrid and everyone's, you know, permanently in school. It's easier for the teachers and everyone and great to see everyone again. Trying to think of things that I guess you should maybe hear about, but I, I don't really think there are many. I mean, I think it's a lot of the kinks have been worked out and I was happy to hear that you guys got the, the Blue Ribbon Award. Yeah, I think Grantham's a great school, so nice.
How about sports?
Um, sports, sports are, they're doing very well. I, most of our teams were undefeated for like the first couple of weeks. We just had like our first loss like last week, but I think we're all doing really well and sports are a lot, it's a lot better season like this year. We've been able to like make every game. There's only one game that got canceled because of COVID. So it's been a lot more normal and practices have been normal, you know, no masks or anything or no, no like real social distancing outside that we have to worry about. It's, it's been nice.
Other questions or comments from the board for Seth right now?
Eleven and golf won tonight, by the way.
We got an update. Did you guys hear that? We got an update from the room that eleven and golf won.
Yeah, nice.
All right, thank you Seth. All right, so Ellen.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So first, I just wanted to congratulate GBS for becoming a blue ribbon school. I'm just super honored to be a part of this community. It's amazing. So at the high school, things are going pretty well. I feel a lot safer knowing that a lot of people have gotten vaccinations. A lot of clubs are up and running now in person. There's a lot of new clubs actually, including chess club, the crocheting initiative, which is part of, I see Seth going like yay. And there's the crocheting initiative, which is part of the interact club. It's a Spanish club now. There wasn't initially a Spanish club. There was only a French club. And now Spanish students can enjoy it as well. Over 50 people turned up to the last meeting, which is great. Homecoming week is coming up and we have all the social events planned out. There's gonna be a bonfire for the seniors. At the football games have been a lot more socially active. There's student section and people can enjoy that. People haven't, people outside of the school haven't really been allowed in yet. Like college representatives and advisors, and I think that may affect like juniors perception of applying to college, but we do have a tent outside, which is good. We can have speeches and stuff out there. It's just a little bit different this year. I think it is a bit harder to social distance now. And once everyone's gotten used to it, but people do still wear masks, which is great. So, yeah.
Any questions or comments from the board? When you were talking about the attendance at things, it made me, it occurred to me, or I'm wondering, do you think that there's been an increase in participation and attendance at things from like before the pandemic to now? Are people like coming out and doing more and like, is there sort of like a rebound of like excitement to be able to get together and go to things?
Yeah, I definitely think so. I'm part of Science Olympiad. And I think freshman year when I joined, there was around 20 people on the team. Last year, only varsity members could join. And then this year, there was like over 40 people joining. There was so many people and a lot of freshmen too. The newer people in the school, just wanting to get to know people. It's great.
Yeah.
Yes, one thing I thought of, and it's kind of something I think I mentioned last year, but busing is still like a little bit, you know, really on the fence for like bus drivers. Like there's plenty of buses. But I'm sure you guys are experiencing the same thing, just hiring bus drivers. It's kind of difficult. And I know like a game or two, people haven't been able to like make, I think maybe like just girls soccer or field hockey game, they couldn't even go to it cause like they had to run like the normal bus routes and they didn't have an extra bus driver to get them to the game. So I think that's the only real thing that I, I would say is, seems like an issue. But yeah, as Ellen says, I think a lot of people are really like showing up to these social events, like now we can have, you know, our football games and I think the bonfire is gonna be great. We collected like 200 extra pallets that we didn't even need. So I think there is a lot of camaraderie around that after, you know, we couldn't do much last year.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you both. And happy start to your school year. We're glad to see you again and we appreciate hearing from you. And I think that that's some interesting stuff to think about as it hadn't occurred to me that like students would, you know, be excited to see each other again and join clubs and go to football games. So that's great. So thank you both. You're welcome to, we won't, we won't make you stay on screen. You're welcome to stay and listen to us talk about other things, or I'm sure you have lots to do tonight. So hopefully we'll see you next month. And thanks for, for joining us.
Thanks. Good night.
Okay, so our next agenda item is something that we're going to try to do for the board meetings this year where we're just taking some time to honor the GBS team. Both, I think we have lots of things to honor folks for right now. One, just above and beyond during the pandemic times, but also in light of the Blue Ribbon Award. So I'll turn it over to Sydney.
Well, we do have every single person in the community to honor, but we're gonna start with different groups and one of the groups from the very beginning of the pandemic, really starting with the very first week of March 13, 2020, is our parent guardian check-in group, and they are all here with us tonight. So for those of you who aren't familiar with the parent guardian check-in, this is a group of our GBS educators who every, it started every Thursday night, every single Thursday night at 7:00 PM. We would get on an open Zoom and just be able to offer some new information for what was happening that week. Mrs. Islander would give some COVID updates. Mr. Britton was talking about tech updates and getting computers home and how they could manage them at home. Mrs. Whitman, right from the very beginning, was targeting social emotional help. Mrs. Reed was jumping in in terms of transitioning in as principal and and making sure that everybody knew what was happening in the big picture of school. So we were on every single week. We were excited towards the end of last year to start to move to once a month. Because I have to tell you, after a while, when we were doing every week, by Thursday night, some of those meetings, we started to get a little punchy towards the end. But it was really amazing and it was an amazing community experience of just having this parent guardian check-in group show up, be available. There were at the beginning nights where we had over 100 parents on there and then, you know, we've dwindled down to maybe a dozen or so, and sometimes even lower than that, which I consider a good sign. But just the comfort that we were there and that parents could be there and listen and ask questions and that it was just open for everybody. So I really hope that the board will share in my thanks to this group who went way above and beyond to make that happen for the entire community because it really helped hold everybody together. So thank you very much. And we have some gifts. I'm gonna start with Mrs. Reed, which is a thank you. And this is for you. Yours is a little different. And one of them is something that I hope you can wear at some point.
I haven't seen you off duty ever, so I'm hoping that that happens.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Mr. Britton, everything from getting every device home to kids and making them work at home and at school and back and forth and in between and in every model. Thank you so much.
It just found you.
It's a set.
Mrs. Islander, thank you so much for navigating all the medical information and being a true voice of reason throughout COVID and making sure that GBS was doing everything you needed to do to stay completely safe.
Thank you.
And for giving us dinner inspiration. Yes. Every week it was like, what's Mrs. Islander having for dinner? I don't know. Let's find out. Then we'll make it.
Trying to make it before seven, but lately.
And as I've said this before, and I will say it again to Mrs. Whitman, who from the very beginning helped keep all of our kids together socially and emotionally. And she kept all of us together.
Thank you very, very much.
And everybody learned about their Nicholas.
Yes.
Maybe you wouldn't be. I, I reference those videos a lot in both of my jobs.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I know some of you were on some of those, but I don't know if any of you who weren't on any of those, if you wanna ask any questions about them, but they were, they were quite the I remember starting the first one joking with Randy, which may not have been a joke in retrospect, thinking should I start this one off by saying captain's log, March 13, 2020? Not knowing how long we would have been going remote. But I, I don't know any other school that did this, that just had that open session, you know, as long as parents wanted it. So it's incredibly, it's another thing that GBS should be incredibly proud of. So thank you all very much.
So, well, I wanted to say thank you too, because you were part of every meeting and everything we did also. So thank you.
I remember that, the thing I remember most and still remember is trying to find which room in my house I can do it from.
I don't know if anybody has questions.
Thank you all. We really appreciate it. All right, I know in my house over the summer, it was like, we don't get to talk to them, to see them this week doing. Nope. No, you don't. They get to have summer. All right, so our next agenda item is, and you all, this is why we called you, not you, you have to stay. This is why we called you here. So you are welcome to stay and listen in on other things or stay for other parts of the agenda, but we also will understand if you, if you take your plant and sneak out. So. Thank you all. We really appreciate you and like, we don't wanna hold you hostage. Yeah, so no.
You're all very supportive of us all the way through. We totally couldn't have done anything we did without all of you behind us. So thank you.
Thank you. Always felt like you had our backs.
Dinner's in five minutes, Karen.
All right, so next on our agenda is the budget timeline for the 2022-23, and this is in the board packet.
The only other thing that we will add on here if we move forward with it is if we decide to pursue the playground bond again. So those will go on the schedule and move forward with that.
Any other questions or adjustments? What folks had for the budget timeline?
Please just not follow our regular board meetings, correct?
Except for Thursday. Okay, then we will need a motion to approve the budget timeline for, oh, and we do need, we need to change at the top, the the dates.
Well, this one?
Yeah. It's this timeline, but it's for got it. But in here it says, oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the budget timeline. Motion from Leslie, we need a second.
Second.
Second from Denise. So all those in favor, please say aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay, next on our agenda is the Glenn Hudson Trust. This was something that we received some communication about to the board from Maria Dahlman about the Glenn Hudson Memorial Fund, which is low in its fund balance. And so there's an email in the board packet and then the accompanying information to show the current balance.
So I reached out to Maria Dahlman about this and asked if there was any family to reach out to or anybody who might wanna continue to, you know, reload this trust to keep it going, and there is not. So since we have $277.45, we usually give $300. My recommendation would be that when we get to May, that the district funds it up to the 300. We give one final Glenn Hudson Scholarship this year, and then that is pretty much the end of that trust. There's, there's nobody else that's come forward to continue it.
This brings to question also about the Hunt Scholarship Fund, which is only a hundred some dollars?
Yes. Yeah. And I'm not sure if she's gotten to the bottom of that one yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I think she's still researching that one, isn't she? The Hunt one? Yeah.
Yes, but that's one that's probably not gonna be funded for a long time.
Right. So we have to, she has to do more research to figure out.
To figure out if we can do the same thing with that one.
Yes.
Just another point, um, I had, I had coordinated the Garden Clubs Scholarship Awards for a few years and we gave larger, larger amounts and we still felt, this is a drop in the bucket. And, you know, we might have bought a couple of books. So I think unless you can give a serious amount, it, it's not that much, much of a help to the students.
I do think that for a lot of kids, everything helps.
Yeah.
Even books, yeah. It depends.
$300 might be one book.
Gas cards. And it's still, I mean, it's still a recognition from the town, even though it's sort of like a token, for lack of a better term. So you know, the intent of the scholarship is nice. Even though you're right.
And I think that's good to consider. Like, we wouldn't wanna lower the amount given to try to extend the life of the
Right, right.
Award. Like, we wouldn't wanna start giving like $50. Like, that wouldn't, that would minimize the sort of impact in a, in a way that wouldn't, at least in my opinion. Any other thoughts on this? So we would need to take action to at this meeting, would we, would we?
We don't have to do anything right now. But I'll just get in touch with Maria and say that in May, this would be.
So we'll set the sort of wheels in motion to do a final $300 scholarship and then we'll take action to remove that.
Okay.
Okay, so our next agenda item is the Blue Ribbon School of Excellence Ceremony Funding Request. And there's a memo in the board packet from Sydney regarding this. Any other information on that you'd like to share with us?
No, this would just be a great honor. The teacher was selected by the teachers and the, it was Sam Hutchins who's been selected to go.
The only comment I had is the meal allowance seemed pretty low.
So what I did was I looked up the federal meal allowance for Maryland, which is, I think it came to like $60. And I cut it off a little bit because some of the meals are at the, I think there's one that we might get at the conference. So I just kind of went by that.
I might get one of them, one meal per day.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but I mean, I don't, I don't.
You're more than welcome to bring us back. I am not gonna argue with you.
The reason I commented is, I at one point worked for the Department of Education in Massachusetts. I mean, this was in the 90s, but still breakfast allowance was like 250. I think lunch was $4 and dinner was $7. There was no way I could stay within that budget. And I was just like, for heaven's sake, you know? Be reasonable. So I'm just thinking. Yeah, I think, I think you should, you should give yourself.
I'm not sure we can go higher than
Than the federal.
Than the federal rate, though. So we're, we're capped.
Than the federal rate, though. So we're, we're capped. It's not like we can say a hundred dollars a day because.
I think that was 66. Let me just do a quick.
I mean, the other option is receipts.
Well, we would have to do receipts no matter what for auditing, so.
Is this not a per diem?
I'm sorry?
This $50 wouldn't be a per diem?
Well, for our, what we would do is we would use a P card that we have a district P card, um, both Kristin and I do. So everything would go on that. And then to process everything for the P card, Karen Lassard would have to have every receipt that, so we would just go up to a certain amount.
We don't have a cap then. You, you only have a federal cap on per diems.
Okay.
So if this is going to be an actual expense, the meal comes to 300 hours. It is what it is.
Yeah, 66.
So there's, there's no cap.
I was looking up the federal just to get a guideline, just so that, you know, we are a government institution. So I figured that would be a, a good, safe way to go.
Feed yourselves and we'll reimburse you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just, yeah, whatever.
Don't feel like you have to go to, you know, McDonald's for dinner.
I'm very excited about meeting the Secretary of Education.
Yeah.
So if we update, is it 66 just for like a budget guidance?
That's the guideline for Maryland for, for the federal rate.
Yeah, I mean, it's $3,400 numbers. It's not going to be that anyways, because.
Right.
We got, or is that 188 with the taxes and fees? Or is that?
Plus.
Yeah. So I mean, this is going to be.
It'll be. Four.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an S. Yeah.
It's just a, I mean.
This is an estimate.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I would say just, if we're going to have receipts, just. Use a description.
Yeah, have reasonable meals.
Yeah, get the steak.
Do you get your flag at this?
We have the flag.
Oh, we have the flag.
We do. We are working on ceremonies and it looks like there'll be one townwide ceremony and we're just finalizing plans with the town and with Eastman. And hopefully we'll have some information to go out about that soon. And then we're going to have one kid ceremony. So there'll be two different things going on. And I think we're going to save the flags and the sign for the kids ceremony. Yeah. Yeah. Because then we can have everybody here. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Very exciting.
So.
So we do get the plaque at the ceremony.
Okay.
The official plaque.
Is, is this a hotel where all the recipients are staying? How that's so nice. So we get to meet other schools.
I do find it amazing when you, when you think of a big picture that we are one of only 352 schools in the entire country to win this for 2021. And of all years to win it, it is pretty exciting to win it this year.
I did want to add one thing. I nearly forgot this. Um, the New York Times Magazine, Sunday Magazine, it was earlier in September, had a feature issue on education. And, um, and one article in particular was about, it was through the eyes of, um, a high school kid in a small town in the Mississippi Delta. And it just made me realize how blessed we are in Grandville. We have resources. This was like reading about a third world country. This kid would have to sit in the gym for class periods when they didn't have a teacher to teach that class. Um, I mean, they did, the plumbing was breaking down. I mean, it just broke your heart. And there were also, um, a series of vignettes from educators in different roles and different schools all around the country. Um, just talking what it was about, what it was like going through the pandemic in, in their role. And I meant to bring the magazine in case anybody wanted to look at it, but, um, it, um, those experiences that they documented were so much in line with what we experienced here. And the big thing everybody talked about was the social emotional and, and stuff.
Well, I can tell you, we are seeing a lot of interesting things in kindergarten right now. Kids who really didn't have early school experiences and community experiences. Really. Kindergarten and preschool, I would say are where the main parts of your day are spent.
I, I do spend some time down there.
Yeah. And, yeah. And, and you, I'm, uh, Christine and Denise, um, you may not have heard it through our, our broken feed last month, but that was one of the things that came from the progress monitoring committee was one of the paras who works with the preschoolers brought back the feedback that what they're seeing is a group of kids who have spent half their life in a pandemic and have not gone to a storytime at a library, haven't gone to a playgroup. Um, don't know for the kids who didn't have a traditional daycare experience, they don't know things like come over to the circle to read a story.
Yeah.
They just sort of stand there. They're not sure what to do in those situations. So just thinking about what those impacts will be um, for the kids coming in, in the next couple of years and how that classroom structure and those sort of base level things that I think we used to have an assumption that kids came in having listened to
Yeah.
a stranger read them a book before, that, that there's groups of kids that have it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Well, just my great nephew, who's going on three, is in speech therapy because he didn't have enough contact with other children. And so he didn't have to try and make himself understood because mom and dad kind of knew what was. Um, so he's in speech therapy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
New challenges.
I bet you'll get to talk to all these other school, blue ribbon schools about all of this. Yeah. Okay. So, um, we do need a motion from the board to approve the, um, Blue Ribbon Ceremony expenditures. Second, I have a motion from Denise and a second from Christine.
As long as you get good meals.
We will approve it as long as you eat. All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. Okay. Next on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will make Grant them proud.
And is, is Sam, has she said yes?
Yes, he did.
Okay, good, good. Okay. So next on our agenda is our Facility Director nomination. We have the, um, agreement in the board packet. We also have the Facility Director here with us tonight. Folks haven't had a chance to meet him.
I asked Toby Campo to come and meet you tonight, um, and we are extremely happy to have him. Uh, I can let Mrs. Reed tell you how happy she is to have.
I am so happy. That was going to be part of my addition to my principal's report.
She, she really misses checking the bathrooms and worrying about the snow coming and everything like that. Um, no, uh, Toby comes with, to us with a lot of incredible experience and, um, it was clear through the interview process that he was just going to be a wonderful fit at GBS. I asked him today if he's already feeling like GBS is home, and I hope that that's true. And, uh, feel free to, um, Toby, if you want to just introduce yourself a little bit to the board.
Yeah, basically, um, I'm from Hill, but right now I'm looking at different options there, but, uh, yeah, I mean, this, I worked at Grafton County, helped the new correctional facility. I think that was 2011. Uh, they put in a new facility and I helped get that commission. So I've got a lot of experience with facilities here. I owned and operated my own business, um, doing gas appliances and refrigeration for Northern New Hampshire. Did all Home Depot and Lowe's work for the factories up there. Um, and I also was a facilities director over Franklin School District for a few years. So, but yes, this is, uh, out of all the facilities I've dealt with, that this is definitely a, a welcome treat, but it's much saner.
Is this a US NC FFA?
No, this is Grant.
I could have told over once.
Yeah. So right now I'm just trying to get my feet under me and see what's going on, but it, it looks like a great community and a great school. So I'm, I'm excited.
Glad to have you.
Yes, very good to have you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm very pleased to nominate Toby Campo as Army Facilities Director in the official capacity.
So we do, now that we've said welcome, we do need, uh, a, a motion to, um, accept the nomination, um, for our facilities director.
I'll move.
Second. All right. So we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Well, now you're officially welcome. All right.
Thank you.
And you are welcome to stay, just as we released the other folks. You are welcome to stay, or if you need to, to head out, no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So our, um, next agenda item is the capital improvement meeting with the select board. So I'll turn this over to Sydney.
So last year, when we were going into, um, our annual meeting season and we were talking about our grounds renovation and playground project, and we were talking about a fire truck in Miller Pond Road and all those other things going on. Um, Melissa White and I started talking about the fact that this coming year, it would be great if, um, maybe sometime in November, we could talk about more of a, maybe not completely official capital improvement planning meeting, but getting the board and the select board together to talk about what was coming up at both our annual meetings. So I'm hoping that we can extend an invitation to the select board for a time in November, which could be inviting them to our November meeting, um, and talking about some, any big ticket items that might be coming forward. And also I think it's going to be important to start talking a little bit about the future in terms of growth. Um, we definitely have experienced growth. We went from 247 to 285 last year. Um, obviously that rate isn't going to stay that rate of change, but that was big growth and it's something that we need to keep an eye on in the future. And we need to keep talking to the town about in terms of is their development coming, you know, what are, what do they have their eyes on to?
Any questions about that from the board?
Would you prefer to do the November meeting or would you like to do a separate night in November?
I would, I know it's long, but I would prefer to maybe put it in the same night. A little easier.
Yes, I think so. If we can.
I mean, not the best way.
We got a couple of long weekends and holiday in November. It's, yeah, it'd be good to do everything on one night if we can do it. But if our agenda looks possibly long, then you might need to consider a second.
Well, we have our first budget presentation that night, but it's all of the special education functions and those are usually pretty streamlined. Those usually go pretty smoothly. So it would be a good night to add this left board in, I think.
Okay. All right. Our next agenda item is negotiations. So we need to, um, set our, uh, folks from the, our representatives from the board, who will be the negotiating team, um, heading into this year's, um, negotiations.
It feels like just yesterday, we negotiated this three-year contract, but we're ready to go again.
Wow.
Um, on top of the fact that we did the MOAs last year, it seems like we've.
Done a lot of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you. First of all, thank you to Denise and Christine. Um, and I know we've said it before, but we appreciate you, you, um, taking on not just the negotiations, but also the MOAs and those things in, in the interim. Um, if we, we would be happy to have both of you do this again, but if you would like a reprieve from that work, um, that's totally acceptable as well. So I'll just open it up and say, is there anyone who is like excited, willing, any of those things, uh, to serve on for the negotiations this year? We'll start there before I have to start convincing people.
Well, I, I would like to say that I would be happy to be a support person if someone cannot make the meeting. But I feel like my family situation is not going to allow me to be a regular negotiator in this bargaining session.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Um, I, I'm not remembering the timeline exactly, but my term, um, on the board is up, uh, as of the end of February. So, uh, I think the negotiations might go beyond that. So.
We would have to have a warrant article on by February. So negotiations would have to be finished by.
And depending, and depending on when the election is, we may get to keep you for March 2.
Oh. Oh, right.
Because if, uh, if our, if our board meeting falls, if our March board meeting is before the election, then you are, so you are at the March board meeting, ma'am.
All right. Well, okay. Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Well, then, 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 then I'll continue. Given that Denise.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but definitely we need somebody else because then, uh, because somebody else needs to. I don't know.
I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, great.
Excellent. Thank you. And Christine, I'm not going to read any, into anything that you just said that makes it sound like you're not going to run the school board again. So I'm just going to pretend I didn't hear any of those little like subtle things that you said. We're gonna, yeah. So, but thank you, Christine and Ed. Appreciate you guys doing that. I think that'll be great. Yes, and Denise will be our. Perfect.
I really appreciate you all doing that very much.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Oh, you're.
Okay. So our next agenda item is the New Hampshire School Board Association Resolutions. So this is in the board packet. Um, we pushed this from last month. So, um, the first thing that we should talk about is if we would like to have someone attend the meeting and if someone would like to attend the meeting, we don't need to look at the resolutions or any of that stuff if we are not having someone attend. So last year we did not attend it. Uh, I have attended it a couple of times before that. It is not a mandatory thing. Not all school boards send a representative, but if we would like to have a voice in the, um, in the process of setting the, um, resolutions for the School Board Association, especially pertaining to the ones that they, that districts have put forward this year, then we should have someone there. So I don't know if any folks have any, um, thoughts or questions about having someone, if you, one, if you feel strongly about us having someone attend, or two, if you yourself would like to attend.
Brittany, you just have a question. But that's usually Yang area, isn't it?
So they moved it up.
To?
Uh, it's October 16th.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry. I shouldn't have said that. It's October 16th from 11 to 1 in Conquer. So.
I'm not even in town.
Okay.
That's, that's a solid one.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, are we allowed to submit any support of these proposals?
Only, it's only, only in-person voting. Yeah.
I see.
Cause the one, the one I think we probably would want to support is the, um.
Diversity.
Yeah, divisive concepts.
So I am open and, and am willing and interested in going. I don't want to be, I didn't, I don't want to always be the person go like, I find it really fascinating. So I'm happy to, to go. But if somebody else really wanted, you can only have, you can send more than one delegate. You can only have one voting delegate.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm happy to go if folks are.
I appreciate you going.
Yeah.
That'd be great for the process then.
Yeah. And I feel the same way about a couple of the resolutions on here. I would like to voice support for those. And also it's, I think it also gives us a good sense of where other districts are, the conversation that happens around some of these can be really fascinating. So, okay, then, so I will plan to go and I, I'll sign myself up for that. And it's a much shorter day than it usually is. Usually it's like five hours long. It's only two this year. So, um, okay. So in looking at the resolutions, what we want to do is as a board, decide what our position on these resolutions is. So, um, we can either say that we are in favor of the resolution as presented by the board. We can say that we are supportive of the position of the, the NHSBA Board of Directors, which may or may not agree with the board's position, or we can take no position on the resolution. And all of those are totally fine. So if we have no position on it, then I won't, I wouldn't vote during that one, which I've done before. We've had ones that we've taken no position on. Um, and it depends a little bit on how the. And it depends a little bit on how the final vote is called. Sometimes they call the vote for the resolution as it's submitted by the, the district. On some of them, they sort of wind up moving in the way of being worded to support the Board of Directors' recommendation. So like, for example, if we look at the first one, which is the one submitted by Massoma Valley School Board about the scholarship fund, the Board of Directors' recommendation was not supportive of it because this is outside of the realm of looking at the, their legislative advocacy, but the Board of Directors would look at this as something that they might like to pursue. So we would decide as a board, do we want, do we support the Massoma Valley Resolution? Do we support the Board of Directors' recommendation, or do we have no possession on that? Any thoughts on that?
I'm generally supportive of it. I think the Board of Directors' recommendation puts it well, meaning they had a request from a number of districts. It seems like a nice supportive gesture. I don't have anything against it. So yeah, I feel like the Board of Directors' recommendation makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay, I thought the
I was reading this. I didn't get the sense that it, they don't support it, that they're going to do anything. But maybe I'm misreading this.
If the delegates vote in support of this proposal, then the New Hampshire School Board Association will establish this continuing scholarship without the proposal being official resolution.
But if they don't, I don't see anything in there saying that if, if we don't support it.
Yeah, Brittany's just looking for us to say whether we want her to vote in favor of the Board of Directors, or whether we don't take the position.
Right. But if I'm reading this correctly, if, if it fails, it doesn't seem like they're going to do anything.
That's correct. If the, if the delegates don't vote in support of it, nothing will happen.
I think we should certainly support it then.
Yeah, we should.
Okay. All right. The next one is the Wilton Lindenboro Cooperative School Board confirmed that all SEUs are paying and segregating dues payments to the NHSBA in accordance with RSA fifteen-five. That this isn't a resolution, this is something that they would like to explain.
What does it explain?
It's the law. I don't
So it sounds like we're not in support of their resolution.
Right, right.
And to clean land on not support, we are supporting the Board of Directors for Massoma.
Supporting the, the Massoma, the, supporting the, the Massoma, what they proposed.
So the resolution.
Yep, because of that last part about if the delegates vote in support, then they will establish the scholarship program. Yep, that's a tricky one. That was a like double negative. Yeah. Okay, so ten is the submitted by the Keen School Board supports diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our schools, is committed to the concept that free and open dialogue around such concepts as racism and sexism is a vital component to education and opposes any actions which limit this free exchange of ideas. The Board of Directors' recommendation is to support.
Yes.
Supports.
And just, is it number twelve also? Why don't they just make one resolution or one?
Well, the the, the number twelve, the, the, here, let's do eleven, and then we'll jump down to
Okay.
Yep, because they are a little bit different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so eleven is Merrimack Valley School Board, the New Hampshire School Board Association calls upon the New Hampshire Legislature to fund a post-graduation transition program for each school district to provide a continuum of guidance for graduate transition from high school to vocation, college, and career. And the NHSBA recommendation is not support because it is falls outside of the purview of the K through twelve study.
Yes, the community colleges are very good at this.
So.
But I think, just to clarify, the point of this is that there is a period of time if you don't have a good post-graduation transition program, there are a lot of, there are a number of students who don't know that community colleges do a good job at it, like, they just fall through the cracks. That's sort of the intention here. I'm not saying we should support it. I agree with that. I'm just clarifying. I think that's the intention, is there are students falling through the cracks who don't even know what their options are.
Yeah, but it just seems to be before they graduate from high school, they should be having contact with guidance to figure out.
Yeah, like you're going to fall outside of K twelve purview, but yeah.
So I'm hearing not support the resolution.
Correct.
Right. Right? Okay, and then twelve, it's similar to ten, so Hanover and Dresden School Boards, the resolution supporting equity and inclusion there. So the recommendation from the Board of Directors is not support because they believe that this resolution is too narrowly focused on the bill that's in question, rather than a broad-based policy statement. So having gone to this before, I know that when there's resolutions that are focused too narrowly, it ties the School Board Association's hands to be able to apply that resolution more broadly in their legislative work. If it's, if they're not direct, if it's too narrowly focused, then they can't advocate for things that might do similar approaches, but don't address it head-on. So I think that's where they're
But the, the final, the final statement says oppose legislation such as, but not limited to names HB, you know, containing language that promotes restriction on free speech. It seems to me that is.
Yeah, but I, I would say the keen one is broader. And if we're going to support that, I'm not sure why we need to support something that may be a little more narrowly focused.
And we can support them both. I mean, we can support this one as well. The, the big
Because the keen one does mention free speech.
Yep. Yeah, the big piece with, I know I know having, I know having sat through, particularly a few years ago, there was a very very difficult conversation at the meeting about some of the bills regarding like control of firearms and weapons on campus, on school grounds. And some of the language that they were talking about, the, the School Board Association hadn't been able to take a position on those bills because of the way that things were worded. It too narrowly focused their the, what they were being asked to, to do. And so I think that's where they're, they're not supporting this one is coming from.
Well, would they be happy with it if they struck out the references to the particular bills? Although the other resolution does mention free speech.
Yeah.
So in some ways, twelve is redundant.
Yeah, I, I think the keen one is more open-ended, which is probably the better course of action here.
And a lot of what happens during the meeting, too, is that they take sort of like this, the, the folks who do the legislative advocacy work are there at the meeting. And so they take the, like, the spirit of the discussion and use that when they do their, their advocacy work. So they, like, there's a lot of conversation that happens around each of these resolutions. And so they don't take just the exact, like, language of the resolution itself. They also take into account, like, they'll say things like, at our annual delegate assembly, this matter had fifteen minutes of discussion, and the body moved in a way to support XYZ. So they'll, they can take sort of like the spirit of the conversation at the time of the assembly as part of their work. But if it's limited by specific, that they can only do that specifically related to certain bills, then they're not able to do that more broadly.
I'm not going to die on the hill, but I, I, I support both because I do feel like the language in this, the Hanover Dresden one, I actually would kind of play devil's advocate, like, oh, you all know where I stand politically, and I, so I'm very much behind number ten. But I also appreciate that this specifically really does clearly talk about unconstitutional restriction on free speech. And unlike the devil's advocate side of, the opposite side of my politics, like, I think it to me, it's more clearly inclusive of, like, our, all of our free speech rights, whereas the other, the other resolution, which I support wholeheartedly, is more, a little more specifically about DE and I. I know there's language at the end about that here, but that's my read on, on the book. So what I'm clarifying is that the other one reads to me as more specific. I mean, they're both about the divisive concepts, work that's happening and the bill that's happening, but this one, I appreciate that it's, I, I appreciate the unconstitutional restriction on free speech that includes all of.
I tend to agree as well.
And we can support both of them. I mean, it's not a neither or, so.
Yeah.
But it's good to have that, to be able to
I suspect similar things are to come out in the discussion at the meeting.
Yes, well, this is the conversation that'll happen.
Yeah.
And for boards that have had this conversation, they're able to, like, I'll be able to chime in and say, our board discussed this. This was sort of the nature of our conversation.
Yeah.
Yep. So are folks in favor of supporting this one with the understanding that we like the sort of direct language here? Don't like the sort of anything that would focus the, narrow the focus of the group too much.
Yeah, I do, I agree. Like, if you strike the HB five four four, that makes it feel a little more political. If that was not part of that resolution, I think it's probably be a little more political.
And a lot of the resolutions don't have bills specifically attached to them. It's just sort of like the spirit of, like, that this group
In reference to
will advocate for, you know, fair funding, for, yeah, okay. Okay, I think that's the last one. It's actually not very many, according to what they usually All right, perfect. Okay, so our next agenda item is the substitute rate of pay. And so we have a memo from Sydney in our board packet.
Yep, it's not, it's about as high as we can go. If we go any higher than a hundred dollars, then we're starting to go over what our, you know, some of our paras are making, but every little bit will help. So I'm requesting that for the remainder of this year, we increase our daily sub rate of pay to a hundred dollars. We need to do absolutely everything that we can to continue getting subs into the building. Mrs. Reed, every morning is still doing a massive puzzle of trying to make sure that we have enough staffing in the places where we need it. It's not getting any easier. In fact, it's probably a lot more difficult even than it was last year.
And I noticed you're still advertising for someone for the after-school program.
We are just, we just hired one more person. We're leaving the ad out there in case we there's, there's one tentative right now. Yeah, but right now, we're good. We brought in all students from the initial waiting list. We've sort of gone to a second wave of a waiting list of people who came in after. But we are at fifty, I believe, or fifty-one. Yeah, so it's really our daily subs that are the biggest concern. And I don't know if you want to add anything about what your morning is like, but every morning Kristin sends out an email of what we need and where and duty coverage, and people have been incredible about helping, but it really is not a situation that's, that's getting any lighter or any easier, and at some point, it's just going to continue to wear on people. So I don't know if that triple-digit of a hundred dollars or continual advertising might draw more people in, but it's the most that we can do right now.
Where does this put us against other schools?
It's a little bit higher than other schools.
I'm surprised that that's not the going rate.
But every day now, I think every day, the school year, maybe except for one, there have been some positions that we just haven't been able to find subs for. And so then generally, those would be para positions, because we have to fill the teacher positions, but then there was a duties that aren't being covered. And thankfully, our staff is so flexible, and I could have like, hey, who wants to do? And somebody always reaches out and does it, or the office staff will cover a duty. But it is a problem that we're just, we just don't have enough people to, to cover. I've started dreaming about it. But it's the first thing I do when I wake up in the morning is I look and see, you know, who's not coming in. So I think I'm anticipating.
And then there was September thirteenth.
Yes, we had, we had one day, but we had no absences.
Wow.
Wow. But Ed, what, what, what the issue is in terms of other schools is they're always going to run into what we're running into is that you, you don't want to have a sub rate of pay that's going to be higher than what you're paying your para educators. And our para educators are paid pretty competitively.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, because the easiest thing to think of would be, well, throw a lot of S R money at this problem, but then you're, you're really kind of getting, you're getting yourself into a bind. And they're also wanting a lot of people who really want to sign up to substitute right now.
Yeah.
Still.
But I guess, are you getting into self-trouble? Because it sounds like you're, to me, you're comparing apples and oranges. I mean, the para is a full-time salary position. Substitute is, there's work one day, there's work not one day.
Yeah, paras get benefits.
I'm not sure sort of comparing the two wages. I'm not sure I would make that conclusion. At least initially, just my initial thoughts on it, it just seems you know, one's more of a temporary position, one is, I mean, just thinking from my personal experience, I, I pay temporary people significantly more than I pay my, you know, full-time staff, just because of the, of the nature of, of the work. But I'm filing a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, I did, I did sort of run through that in my head. I think it would, and it would be the benefits that, you know, would be the, the kicker, but I do think that there would be issues, and I can always just reach out to the paras and ask them, you know, how they would feel about it, but I think that, in my opinion, there would be some concern of saying, we're bringing in people and we're paying them more than we pay you on a, on a daily basis. And I think, to some, I'm not sure what you would think of, of the reaction of that would be. A hard sell.
And I think
If the paras are picking up some of the extra duties and whatever, they might be happy to have another person there so that there's less burden on them.
And some of it, I think, comes back to, to that, like, one of our pipelines for paras is through being a sub. Like, we have several paras who, they're starting, they started with us as pretty regular subs, and now they've moved to the para position. And so I think, I, I mean, I think there, there's always a risk there that if, for, like, if there's somebody who doesn't need benefits, and they may go back to, they may leave their para position because they know I'm going to always be able to get a sub job. Like, I mean, we may have some folks who, who know, like, they know that every day, there's a need for subs, and so they could leave their full-time, they could leave their para position, take a sub job every day and make, potentially make more money than they're making as a para.
Yeah, and that, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with a hundred dollars a day. I'm just not sure I would completely close the door and say we're done. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, I we may need to revisit it.
Yeah. But we also don't know if we raised it to two hundred dollars a day, if we'd get more applicants.
Well, and as you said to me, it's the, the, we can get as many applicants as we want. It's the people who actually accept the sub jobs that we need. We need folks that are taking the
Because last year, we had twenty people sign up as subs and only three accepted jobs.
Kristin, how many, would you have the equivalent of meeting one person a day, or do you often need two people a day?
Keep going.
Maybe, I could go back and look, but probably six or seven.
Wow.
That you could keep, like, full-time? I mean, how, how often do, I, I guess what I'm thinking is how some schools have a permanent sub. And that person is always there to schedule. Is one person adequate enough to fill the needs?
One person would fill one position. You know what I mean? It's, I feel like we could, because I've had that thought, too. It would be one person to fill one opening, but then my next thought would be, what if we had two? And what, because we have a lot more than one, one opening every day.
Did we, we advertised for a permanent sub last year, didn't we?
We did, yeah.
We did.
We did hire two last year who were long-term. We did hire two last year who were long term permanent subs.
Is that worth putting out again?
Well, I feel like we have people who are kind of permanent subs, they're coming in regularly every day.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we did toy around with the idea of hiring somebody just for that. Heavy duty period of lunch and recess in the middle of the day, but then. There's always something else that comes up, you know, so we've we've been playing around with a lot of different options and. It's really just, again, getting more people to apply and then getting them to accept the positions.
And and there's no. Staffing type agency that specializes in.
No.
And I think when we look around at, you know, all the businesses around and all the openings, I know we had one sub that was coming in. Not regularly, but. Fairly often and. She was, she had, this was her third part time job and her two other part time jobs were trying to fight her for to come full time. Because everyone needs help. It's just we're up against a lot of openings.
Yeah. For what it's worth, because when. Um, we first booked up here, I did something at the middle school and high school. And. After. I had been in those schools for a while. Um, I just subbed when I had advanced notice. Because it's really hard to deal with the phone call at six thirty in the morning. Um, and so I I had enough days by just being booked ahead of time.
In our, um, we use frontline, so as soon as the person puts in the absence, it calls out to all the subs.
Oh.
So it's. Usually pretty far in advance, and then on Sunday nights, I send an email out to our subs saying, hey, these jobs aren't filled yet. Um, and hope to get a couple more. So we do try to do that advanced.
Yeah.
I mean, there are always some that.
On on average, how many calls are you getting the morning of or, you know, middle of the night?
Um, like a last minute absence?
Yeah.
Those are actually more rare.
Okay.
Right now, anyway, so one of the things we took the opportunity to really look at, why are there people absent? Um, and they're all. Big life things. Or COVID related where. Somebody in their household has COVID or, you know, like a child that they have to stay home and take care of or. Um, some kind of contact or um. A cold like symptoms and then that, so maybe. Maybe one or.
Terms of the COVID system, is it? One symptom in their home?
Or they could be a close contact.
Or, oh, yeah.
It has, it's it's a one symptom for. The staff member.
Yeah.
But lots of staff members have children, so if their child has one symptom and has to stay home, may have to stay home and take care of their child.
Yeah.
Discussing staffing with other superintendents and districts in the area. The response that I get from a lot of them is we're lucky to be staffed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I mean, just.
Like our biggest worry is substitutes, we're lucky to have staff, a lot of schools are running, just not even with a full staff.
Yeah.
It's just a really tough situation right now.
Yeah, something, I mean. Ballpark girl being. Around twelve fifty an hour. Based on an hour day. Just given what other retailer, maybe what retailers are paying now seventeen, eighteen hours a day in an hour. I don't see this problem going away anytime soon.
By demand and sentence. Yeah, let's try a hundred and see.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we need a uh um. Motion to. Let's see, approve the increase in the sub rate of pay.
Second.
Right, so we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed say nay. Okay, all right, on to our big list of policies.
We are back into policies and there were a lot of laws passed last year, and so we're going to be playing catch up for a little bit. I was telling Brittany that there's really. We have been calling policies and really streamlining, and I think we're going to be creating a lot of new policies, unfortunately, because of all these new laws that are coming in and. There are a lot of school board memos coming out that these are new and required by law, so if they're telling us they're required by law, we have to have them.
Okay, so let's look first at our one for second reading and adoption, which is, um, we looked at this previously, this is for the, this is. B E D H, so public participation. Um, at board meetings, so it's B E D H and B E D H dash R, and so we're looking at a second reading and adoption for this. Any comments or questions on that one? Okay, so we need a motion for a second reading and adoption of B E D H and B E D H dash R.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion from Ed and a second from Leslie, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Alright, so let's look at.
Can we just go back to the last one just for a quick question?
Yeah.
Yep, and then B E D H R. Me at the bottom of the page. And uh, there's a sentence saying, all comments submitted remotely will be read aloud for the public record. But as we saw in a couple of board meetings. Do we need to say all appropriate comments?
We have to read all comments that come in. With a name and address, I mean, if there's anything vulgar or defamatory or anything like that, we wouldn't read it. Because we wouldn't let somebody say that in person.
Okay. That was only.
Yeah, it'll be. Uh, yeah, it'll be comments that are um. Within those guidelines. So have a name and address attached to them and don't.
Respectful.
And don't, you know, address an individual by name, those things.
Yeah.
Funny questions, I'm trying to remember. Where do, are you in the handbook?
These policies, so they're just hosted on our website. There's a. Is the index of policies in the handbook?
It's, so we have an index for each um section, each section, and we are, we're cleaning the index for each section as we go through it.
So that's not in the.
A, B, C. And D should be clean and ready, we're in the middle of E.
Yeah.
They're not in the handbook, though, they're just on the website, yeah.
And there's references in the handbook to.
To policies.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you for that.
Yeah, at the very end of the um family handbook, there's a list of the ones that are particularly pertinent to families.
Yeah, I remember that, I think that's why I asked.
And then just when we went through last year, I think for the first time, we tried to link whenever there was a reference, we tried to link it to the website, so hopefully those are there.
Okay, so let's do, we'll start with J I C, so this is the the first J I C that you come across in your board packet is being replaced by a J I C. That's later. Couple pages down. Um, and so the one that we'll be looking at is the J I C student conduct, and it starts with the statement of purpose, the Grantham School Board is committed to promoting a safe, healthy orderly.
I can give you a quick summary of the purpose of J I C, J I C D and J I C D R. Which is that there have been some laws and policies in place for. Um, discipline and specifically suspension and expulsion for special education students. And if you remember the omnibus bill that got passed through last year. Those disciplinary practices moved over into application for regular education students. So these new policies represent those practices for basically all students at this point. There are still a few exceptions for special education students. You know, such as a manifestation hearing or um, there are some forty five day protocols, those kind of things, but. It's making it um. Putting the onus on the school to use positive behavioral planning. And communication and a lot more before the student loses any right to an education through suspension or expulsion. And that pretty much sums up these ten pages.
Yeah.
And I have to tell you that we are required to have this policy and. This may come into play if we get involved. Where we're working in concert with Lebanon, but in terms of G V S, we really don't suspend or expel students. We occasionally suspend, but it's rare.
Any questions for J I C? Okay, so we need a motion. Um, to accept the um revision and this is a first reading of J I C.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, so J I C D under that same ten pages, any questions on that one?
Um, I do have a couple comments. Towards the bottom of the page, first page, under item one, removal from the classroom. I think after. The second paragraph, it's say removal is not appealable. Rather than detention.
Second paragraph under removal.
Yeah. Should say removal is not appealable. Because that's what it's about, removal, no.
But isn't J I C D, and replacing it with J I C D dash R?
No, it's, that's an additional. It's its own animal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And on the second page, okay, under. Or temporary reassignment. It didn't say anything about whether or not that's appealable, and all the other ones did, so I don't know if that's.
I will check on that to see what the specific law says.
And on the third page, under. Six A short term suspension. Item I. Uh, it's in the second line. Um, personnel importing but not limited to. I think it's supposed to be an act of theft, not and. And on the next page. It's at the top, long term suspension may be imposed for. And um, item three is possession of firearm, BB gun, or people, then should we say? Other weapon or dangerous materials?
That's what I had a question about too, because I was thinking, what if a child had a knife?
Yeah.
Or. I mean, that's a serious.
So this is. Specific to the law, so there are other places where we can do that for. For suspension and expulsion, but when they're referring to this part of the long term suspension, this is specific to.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. So I would leave.
Okay. Yep. So, and then skipping a page, going over, these aren't numbered, but under. Modification or reinstatement. After suspension or expulsion, I had a question about the date there. Um, submitted and writing to. Superintendent, no later than August fifteenth, why was I questioning that? Okay, I must have misread that and thought it said September, but while the school year's already started. Okay, sorry about that.
Anything else for J I C D? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the first reading of J I C D.
Are we saying as amended?
As amended, yes, for J I C D as amended. A motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, J I C D dash R is our L U with the Grantham Police as. Updated to align.
And the chief person has given his not of approval to this and. But he's good with it, as is.
Any questions there? Okay, so we'll need a motion to um. Approve the revision of um J I C D dash R. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed, and so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, so E B B is uh required by law, school safety. Any questions on this one? Okay, so we need a motion for um first reading of E B B. The motion from Christine and a second from Leslie, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Alright, so E B C A is another new required by law. Any questions there? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the first reading of E B C A. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, E B C B. At some point, this is going to be a rock club and a punk club in New York. E B C B new um, as required by law, any questions about this one?
Do these all align with our existing practices right now at G V S?
They, they do, we will need to, um, Mrs. Reed and I will need to update the safety plan, not the emergency plan, but the safety plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll need to change in the handbook where it says student conduct, we'll just need to change that to read code of conduct, just so that that aligns. But other than that, we're in pretty good alignment because we already had. Positive behavior and we already follow these practices. Just for the record, I will say that E B B, E B C A, E B C B are all policies I really don't think we need. But.
Do you really have a fire drill, fire drill every month?
Yeah, well, it's technically your.
Or fire safety, whatever hazard.
We do, except you're allowed to not have them in winter months. Like if you staff them in other places, so how many have we had so far?
So we've had three so far. Yep, and we try to plan them when the weather's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you get to count the the one that wasn't a drill?
We did end up counting that one. We were like.
More realistic conditions.
And we actually learned more from that one than we did from any.
Yeah.
And if you run summer school, you're required to have a fire drill for summer school too.
Yeah.
We practice the drills here that um. Where you select some students that you pull out of the student body. And you don't tell who's missing.
I had that at my old school.
Yep, and uh, they're assigned to a staff member whose job is to meet with them in a specific location, and it's just your checks and balances. If somebody's missing, how do you find them and who are they and?
So that actually normally happens during a fire drill because kids go off services or whatever. So we're constantly on the radios trying to, do you have, we're missing so and so, do you have so and so, so we are checking on that. There was a time in my tenure here that. The fire department would come over and stand in front of doors and block them, so we had to come up with alternative ways, and every once in a while, they'd take a kid. But that hasn't happened in a long time.
Good, no.
I don't like it.
Well, Denise and I probably remember getting under the desk.
Alright, so we need a motion to approve the first reading of E B C B.
Second.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we're gonna lump together E C A B, E B B C dash R dash one. And E B B. And E B B C dash R dash two, because those are all ones that we are rescinding because they have been covered by the ones that either we just did or other things. Any questions about rescinding those policies? Okay, so we need a motion to rescind policies, E C A B, E B B C dash R dash one, and E B B C dash R dash two. Alright, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Alrighty, so J F A B D. We're looking at a revision of this and the changes are marked on the policy. Any question about this one or information you can give us? I have to add one thing to J F A B D that Ms. Woodman and I needed to clarify. So if you look at the second page under number seven. Is awaiting foster care placement. I need to add in there, awaiting foster care placement. And meets at least one other criteria under the homeless list. And the reason for that is because they have this whole new policy for foster care. So right now, if a student is awaiting foster care placement, that's not significant enough. Under the homeless policy, they have to meet another homeless criteria, or they have to meet something under the foster care policy. So awaiting placement is not. A homeless, yeah. Yep.
But I mean, that child has to be living somewhere.
Right, but they're not, just because they're awaiting a foster care placement doesn't necessarily mean they're homeless.
Right.
Up here.
Right.
Any other questions about that one?
This guy did have something.
Yes. It's a lot of pages.
Yeah, um, the page that's with dispute resolution at the top.
Yep.
Just in the second paragraph, under dispute resolution. Third line from the bottom of that paragraph, I think it should read the parent or unaccompanied youth, because that's what it says everywhere else. And there's on the next page. I didn't, at the very top, I didn't get why we needed that second appeal in quotation. Because it says dispute resolution appeal on the previous page at the bottom.
Is it saying that it would be referred to as appeal?
That's what I think it's saying.
Oh, okay.
Instead of resolution.
Oh, okay.
That both of those things will just be referred to as.
Okay, appeal, okay. And then under item C, second line. Date and time, strike the word of, date and time the appeal was filed.
Yes, got it, thank you.
Did he have a question about this policy? And it might have been answered in here, but I didn't get this. So let's say that a student and family are homeless and are. Residing at the Hickson shelter in. Is it, I can't remember, is that White River Junction?
Oh.
Or is it actually still?
The Haven?
So how does that impact, you know, what district does that child? Where are they being schooled and how are the transportation class? How do they determine?
So if the students were at G B S and the best thing for them is school stability. So if they're at the Haven, then the best thing for them is to stay at G B S. So with their teachers, with all their services, you know, anything else that they would have. So if the parent can transport them, that's the best situation. And then we would reimburse the trans, the parent for mileage and share that cost with the other district, with the Hartford District. And then if the parent can't transport, then we would have to find busing. You know, some kind of busing or hire a bonded service, a bonded car service to do it, which is the priciest of situations. But we are responsible and districts are excellent about sharing those costs where the, where the child should stay and then where they're residing at the moment. But the most important thing is that they can stay stable.
Right.
And then at some point, when they do find a stable place to be, they will always be able to finish the year wherever they were. And then even if they do find a stable place, they could, for example, finish the year at G B S and then move to their new district over the summer.
That's good.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the first reading and revision as amended of policy J F A B D. A motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright, J F A B E, J F A.
Is that the most letters these can have?
How many? Oh, there's one that's really long.
Yeah, I like it when they spell something, so I can say things like J F A. And this is a new required by law. Any questions about this one?
On the second page, under best interest and knowledge determination dispute, yada, yada. Second paragraph. And a second line says place within a new school, within this district. Should also say another district?
I think they're just saying if it is within the district, you're not going to worry about records.
Okay. Oh, okay, it's just, okay.
So it's within.
It's within the same district.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to accept the first reading of policy J F A B E. I had a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright, good job. That was a lot of policies. Alright, so our next agenda item is the principal's report. So I loved having the chance to see the letter from Secretary Cardona. That was very cool. Anything else that you would like to add or highlight from your report?
First of all, just Randy and I had a really fun time making new letterhead. It's not perfect, but we had to work as well.
I like it.
On the top, I always put current enrollment and since I wrote this, we have one more student.
Okay.
So we're up to two hundred and seventy-seven. And then I just wanted to reiterate that I'm very thankful for Toby and who's coming to Grandham Old School.
Any questions for Kristen from the board?
I love the rainbow day.
And we had previously sent out letters to the community to get other people involved. I hadn't, I didn't go out anywhere because I didn't want to be seen in what I was wearing. So I don't know if anyone took part in it.
I've seen your, saw your, we support our Blue Ribbon School sign in places in town.
And I have more to give out.
I love that.
It's hard to get out of the building to go bring them places.
Especially when you're dressed like Rainbow Brite.
Yeah.
What is this little ball?
Those are so cool.
So I think that they used hula hoops.
Oh.
And made them all stay together so they could be inside of them.
In P E.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard, I heard about this at home, that they would, they've been building. Building these little, yeah, they are building them out of hula hoops in P E, these little, these little.
Then do they roll around in them?
No, they just.
They just go for these.
It's like a little, a little fort.
In fact, I don't think they can even touch it or it's going to fall over.
Yeah.
It's there.
I love the pictures.
Yeah, yeah.
Pictures are great.
Yeah.
It's all about the kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, next up, superintendent's report. Anything that you would like to add or draw our attention to? I do just want to draw your attention to two quick things in my report. One is just to keep your eye on the state board vote coming up about the ability to move to remote or distance instruction. Right now, it's going to the state board at their November tenth meeting. And the commissioner is proposing that there is absolutely zero ability for schools to move to remote under any circumstances, so.
Under any circumstances.
Yes. And didn't he make a statement that we should already be functioning as if this is? As if it is law already, yeah. Yeah, so when Manchester moved some of their elementary schools to remote because they had some cases really rapidly rising. He made a call to the Manchester superintendent to ask him not to do that. But.
I'm just curious, did they, did they follow?
His request? No, no, they went remote until they felt it was safe to bring everybody.
Good.
So doesn't this step on local control?
Good question.
And public health practice?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what's happening on the tenth? Is that a public event?
That's the state board where they will hear his request and see if they will, yes, agree with that. And they are public. Yeah, and it is public. And my guess is that they'll, they will do that, that they'll agree.
So do they just not count it as school day?
Right, so, so basically, if we, Kristen and I were walking down the road, that, you know, what if we really felt that we were putting people in danger? And we decided to close school or go remotely for a few days, just to get on top of people getting tested or something, you know? Nothing even long term. The, looking down the road, what would happen is we would technically lose those instructional hours. We would take those off of our nine hundred and forty-five hours requirement. We would look at where we are at the end of the year.
Yeah.
We would probably, at the end of the year, ask you to write a waiver. If this goes through, they would probably deny it and then we would have to see what would happen after that. And if we're denied money or something like that, some kind of funding. So I don't really know where it's going to go, but it is a concern at this point because we don't know. Where the winter is going to go with, with COVID cases. And, and the bigger, I mean, it is, it is a problem, but the bigger issue is that schools, which are, you know, we just finished this discussion about staffing. Yeah. He's saying that we can go ahead and provide remote instruction if a parent requests it when kids are home. But, you know, I have a good friend who's a middle school principal who had three quarters of two of his grades who are home. And there's no staff when they're still in person to be able to provide remote instruction. So how are, you know, it's the expectation that you're supposed to provide both environments simultaneously with the same staff is an impossible expectation. Which is.
I think remotely is similar to that. If it's remote, it doesn't count toward their number of hours.
So I'm not really sure.
It'd be different if, if it was clear that this was getting behind us, but it's not. Yeah, and kids can't be vaccinated.
Or if there was a demonstrated situation where schools were taking advantage of it and like.
Right.
I think all schools are trying their darndest to be in person. And if they're going remote, it's out of significant need. It's not just because they want to stay home for a day.
Or when the pandemic was raging, they didn't want to give us guidelines, but now when we're in this another limbo region, they're going to lay it down.
Yeah. No. If we had any kind of data that schools were going remote just willy-nilly, then maybe that would make sense if there was a, a problem to respond to.
Yeah.
But it seems like this is a, a solution in search of a.
Problem.
Problem.
Yeah, that's exactly. Well, it's, it's just such a blanket policy that it doesn't take into consideration anything about the differences.
The realities, yeah.
Yeah.
It's very irresponsible.
Yeah, so that one's one to keep our eyes on. And then the other thing I wanted to keep, have you all keep your eyes open for. Is that our fundraising campaigns are really going to be launching. We have one fundraising campaign site that's open. We already have, I think, close to three thousand dollars that have been donated there. We are launching our brick engraving project. So our goal is going to be to sell five hundred bricks. And for those of you who know the song, I will walk five hundred miles. So it'll be five hundred bricks. I, I heard from the proclaimers today that we can use their song, so. Oh, my God. That made my day.
Do they want to come?
I, I'm going to.
Oh, Lauren, stop it. We're going to fangirl me and Brittany.
Yeah.
Maybe I do, I don't know, I'm not going to.
I think I just made Brittany's day too.
So cool.
So I was thinking, if everybody on the school board wants to get a brick anyway, why don't we have school board bricks together?
Oh, that would be great. That would be really nice.
Maybe even see best board members, they might be interested.
Definitely.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. So we're setting that up and every brick is going to be fifty dollars. And you can have three lines of engraving of fifteen characters each. So that's going to be launching on October fifteenth. And then the next thing will be a raffle for the seventeen days that kind of bookend Thanksgiving and the holiday break. So we're just finalizing that and that'll launch on November first. So we're really moving pretty heavily.
In the school or?
It's, it's going to be everywhere, everywhere in the community. So it's, it's, the fundraising effort is really going well and, and going strong right now. So we're pretty excited about that. So keep your eyes out for all of those things. And everybody's going to be singing the proclamers song for long. And I did ask Mr. Pollard to make his own version and maybe a little music video.
I cannot.
For real, he's music from the future.
So excited.
So Sydney, at the bottom, where you talk about the R F P.
Yes.
Okay, three quote situation. I'm not clear about the three quotes.
So we, you had approved originally the R F P that went out where we only got one back and we decided to put it out again.
Yeah.
Within that R F P was a site survey where they basically just come out and do the whole lay of the land.
Yeah.
And what I would like to do is just go ahead and do that now before the snow falls.
Yeah.
And that's not going to be anywhere over ten thousand dollars. In fact, I don't think it'll be over five. So that would just apply in our policy to three quotes. And I'd like to go ahead and move forward with that because that's just going to help our playground project move along, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if you want to bring that to a vote for action tonight, you can, but since you already approved that in the R F P, I was going to move forward with that. Yep.
Yep, good.
Because it's harder to use those transoms once the snow is down there. Any questions for Sydney? Alright, thank you. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda and the additions, changes, amendments to the consent agenda. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry, second.
Alright, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and we do have a non-public session tonight. We don't have any business following on our non-public session, so anyone who's still joining us, thank you for sticking with us. We hope our owl, our, oh no, hot guy, hot guy. We hope hot guy made this a, a good experience. And we will come back into public session to officially adjourn the meeting after our non-public. But there's no business that will be taking up no votes, nothing like that. And just a reminder, we have a budget forum. Yeah, go for it. Sorry. We have a budget forum on this Thursday from seven to eight on Zoom. The link for that is on the website. So that's our next thing is the budget forum this week. And then our next board meeting is November second, so just for folks that are joining us. So we will come out of, or we will go into a non-public session, we'll come back out to adjourn. But we won't have any votes, so we will not restart the Zoom meeting. So when this Zoom meeting closes, we'll just be done with the remote access for tonight. So thank you for joining us and for watching, if folks are watching this after. So we do need a vote in the public session still to enter non-public. And what is our, our S A for non-public?
We're going in under ninety-one A three two C.
Ninety-one A three two C. Alright, okay, so we need a roll call to enter, we need a motion to enter non-public session under R S A ninety-one A three two C. Alright, I have a motion from Denise and a second from Leslie, so we need a roll call. Leslie?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Alright, so we'll move into non-public. Which means we'll. Good night, everyone. I'll come in, shut the door.